So the first question I'm going to ask, because I've asked everybody. Okay, maybe I'll ask it a different way. A lot of people have been talking about our current city council and you guys have been on there for a while and the city is still messed up. So who is the cause? How are you going to fix it when you've been in this? Where you've been, you've been in city council. How are you going to fix it when you haven't fixed it yet? Or talk about those fixes.
So I'm going to be honest, I don't think it's messed up. And you kind of have to get on the inside to really understand where it was compared to where it is and then understand how far we brought it. So to be fair, I can understand 100% why people would feel that way. I also feel that way sometimes. I use the phrase a lot of times, the speed of government, which is obviously slang for very slow. And but like things, you know Brett and I worked on the street standards, which I'm sure will come up at some point. Two years ago or three years ago, it's been a minute. And we're not, just not feeling those results yet because anything that was built prior to that is starting with the old street standard. So have we improved the street standards by almost 10 feet? Yes. Does that allow for parking on both sides of the street and still get down the road? Yes. But if you've been here longer than say 2020 or 2021, are you still feeling those crunches? Yeah, because it's under the old system. So the, we have come a long ways. We've done a lot of good. I mean, lots and lots of good. I think the last four years have been better than any four year stretch prior to that, especially in change. But it just takes a while to feel that. So I feel your pain, I understand the question, but I think just be patient, you'll see it's better than it was. And especially density and just total unit counts in general. One of the things that of course Brett and I and Rich worked on was the zoning code, which took our resident count from under the tier system, which was projected to be possibly over 300,000 units, down to today, the projections with the current zoning code, under 150, maybe 125,000 total residents. And there's other things that's helped that, water, our water situation. But without going much more into that, give these guys a chance. We've already made leaps and bounds, great changes and those, it just takes time to really, really understand that. Craig, you want to go ahead?
Maybe.
Looks like his connection's frozen. Maybe Brett can talk for a minute while he comes back.
Maybe. Okay, I'm back here now, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so, so some, I just need to throw some compliments at Jared and Brett's way and the current city council. It's exactly what Jared said. They have made significant changes that are not being felt yet. Let's look at where some of the problems are. In city councils before, they approved not only just hundreds of units or even thousands of units, there were city councils that literally approved tens of thousands of housing units in Eagle Mountain. And, and many of those under standards that are, that are challenging for us to work with now. And so when you look at the traffic problem now, it's because of city council decisions that happened many years ago. It wasn't this city council that caused that, the road issues. We have road issues because of the prior councils that were approving housing units faster than we could build the roads and faster than the road funding can come in. And other things that need to be recognized is there's a state government that's involved with some of the roads that we have to work on. And there are other cities we have to coordinate with, with roads as well. And so it's not just this city council. This city council, like when you look at Brett and Jared and things that they did to change the code, to improve housing and to approve many different things that we are getting to see some of the fruits of today. They did those a few years ago, but you're not, again, like Jared said, you're not going to feel it. I've been on the planning commission for over a year now and their decisions that I've made on the planning commission that also won't be felt yet. And just an example of that, there was an 858 unit subdivision that was proposed south of Parkway Fields. That's south of where the roundabout is in city center. And as, and the planning commission, I spoke very strongly against that kind, that kind of housing development. For a couple of reasons, one of those is the land is designated for more of a commercial business type of a use as opposed to residential. And I was opposed to changing our commercial land and the residential land. And the second, our roads can't support 858 units right there. That would, you already know how bad the traffic is down in that area. But that decision, you know, is that something I made or made along with my fellow planning commissioners? But again, you, just because I've been in the last year, it's like, well, what's Craig done in the last year that we can feel right now? You're not necessarily going to feel now the things that I have been involved with on the planning commission. And the same goes for the current city council. There's never been a city council that I've been aware of that has been this involved on trying to fix the housing issues and the road issues here in Eagle Mountain.
I think he's done. I heard most of that Craig, so hopefully connection will improve a little bit. I would just say, you know, first the question needs to be answered, how long have you served, right? I've been a member of the city council for three and a half years. So the only person who is junior to me on the council is Rich Wood, who came into in this last term. He's about a year and a half into his term. Prior to that, I served four years as a planning commissioner and I served there with Rich Wood for a couple of years and with Jared Gray for a couple of years. And we, having no legislative authority, were able to make some pretty significant recommendations and changes and put them before the city council and they were wise enough to listen and to adopt them. So some of the things that we've done, that you've started to feel some of the impacts from is that we tackled the zoning code. What the city council would say prior to us arriving on the planning commission is, it's the tier system, there's nothing we can do about it. And I'll just give you a quick rundown of what the tier system was. The tier system basically said, as a developer, you can build up to 20 units per acre and you can do that anywhere in the city, that you can get zoning for residential use. The trade off is in order to be able to vest that density or be given that density by contract, you have to dedicate open space and some improvements that meet the code requirements. We just looked at it and said, why are we giving the developers an opportunity to make that decision in all of these areas of our city? And we said, we think we can do something better, more unique and that will produce better outcomes. And so we went to work. My son lives, lived, he doesn't live there now, but he still owns a home in Sweetwater. And so they built that home there in Sweetwater on a 40 foot residential lot. So it had 40 feet of frontage. It's a 30 foot wide home, has a 16 foot garage. So you can imagine what the rest of the home looks like. Excuse me, has a air conditioning unit on the five foot side yard setback of his house. So you can't get a lawnmower around that air conditioning unit and down the side of the house with a fence in place. And on the other side, there was a sliding glass door that allowed him to step out of his kitchen onto a platform and then to step down. And it literally creates a barrier of getting anything into the backyard on that side of the house. So I saw those things and we talked about those things. We just said, we can do better and we should do better. So we began to make some recommendations to the city council about zoning changes. We reworked the entire zoning system and went to more of a, what do they call it? A Euclidean? A Euclidean style zoning where we just wanted to designate areas for certain sized lots and then let the infrastructure go in. There's so much I can talk to you about this, I don't want to be a hog on time. But I think it's really important for people to understand the changes that we've made. So the smallest single family lot now that you can request as a developer in Eagle Mountain City? The smallest, this is the absolute smallest, 58 feet of frontage. So we went from some lots that were 40 to the very smallest being able to be requested at 58 and many in excess of 100 feet of frontage. And that's our RC zone, is a 58 foot frontage, which requires an eight foot side yard setback on one side of the house and a 10 foot side yard setback on the garage side of the house. Now what does that do? It opens up the ability for homeowners to utilize their property in a more effective way and adjusts the quality of life for the residents who purchase those homes. Perhaps knowing, perhaps not knowing what the impacts are going to be of having a five foot side yard setback on both sides of your home or an eight and 10 on the side of their home. So if you buy a single family home in Eagle Mountain that's vested under the laws that Jared and I and Rich worked hard to create, you now have a better home that will allow you to live a little bit different quality of life. You can get a lawnmower in your backyard. You can park a trailer or a UTV on the side of your house. We did that with zoning, we did that with, and so we're starting to see that in some of these developments that are coming. Parkway Fields is a good example of that. Parkway Fields came in and is vested under that zoning, so they have to do those side yard setbacks and those frontages on their lots. The other thing that we, that we've done, there's so much, is it okay if I tell them about the roads? Jared and I did the.
Try to be brief, I covered.
You want to talk about it? There's just a lot. So we dealt with residential zoning. We also looked at and said, what about our street standards? That's one of the things I ran on. My platform when I ran the first time was I wanted to adjust our street standards so that we'd have better ingress and egress and parking standards in the city. So Jared and I went to work my first year on the city council. Sometimes with the opposition of our staff, we were fighting them a little bit. They didn't think we should be looking at and adjusting the local street standards. They felt like that there's some risk to that and that perhaps that creates avenues for unsafe circumstances. And so we tried to listen to them. But we landed without knowing it exactly where the state would allow us to go. So we adjusted the street front or the right of ways from 53 feet for your local streets, which gave you 28 feet of asphalt. And then it gave you a five foot, this is what was, what was being entitled. So 28 feet of asphalt, five foot park strips and then a five foot sidewalk. We came in and adjusted that to 59 feet, so we added six feet of right of way to it. Found out later that it was as much asphalt as we could require under state law. The state had passed a law that kind of limited that to 32 feet of asphalt. Now what does that do? You guys are pretty smart, you understand what happens. You open up that street network, suddenly you can park a car on both sides of the street. In these areas where they have vesting that has 40 foot lots, if they don't have a street vesting under an old code and they're required to meet the new standards, they have to build a little wider road. It allows for your kids to park on the shoulder of the street or your daughter or your husband, if he's in the doghouse. But it gives you some flexibility and I just think it adds to the quality of life. So I'll let it go there, probably said to him, there's a lot of other things that we can talk about. But Jared's right, we've made a lot of adjustments. We're just starting to see the fruits from those adjustments that we've made. And we've seen a lot of pushback to those adjustments. One of the things we did is we actually recommended as a planning commission to the city council to standardize garage sizes in single family homes. We got the city council to adopt an ordinance that required that the inside of the garage be 22 feet by 22 feet. So you could actually park two cars in a two car garage and perhaps throw a garbage can in there and then still get out of your door, right? And maybe pull something in that's longer than your UGO into that garage. The very next legislative session, the state came in and they didn't call it the Eagle Mountain law. But what they did is they came in and said, cities cannot mandate the sizes of garages in single family homes. But what they didn't do is remove our ability to regulate townhomes and condominiums. And so that standard still stands today and is being employed in townhome and condominium developments. And we had members of the council when we looked at that, that are on this council, that were okay removing that standard. And I wasn't and Jared wasn't. I mean, we fought to keep that in place because it, for me, the reason I serve is I want to improve the quality of life for Eagle Mountain citizens, for my family, for my friends, for your family and your friends. Because it matters to me.
So it's not about the money?
I wish I'd been thinking about whether it's actually cost me Angela to serve. Yeah, if I just counted what my time is worth, it's, it's, anyway. I can make a profit in my business when I'm engaged there and I've spent a lot of time engaged in the business of the city away from my business. So I'm going to tell you just real quick, another fun one that I, that I haven't talked about at all in this campaign. But before I was ever even elected, I ran, oh mercy, this would have been 10 years ago, so 2015-ish. And I didn't win in that election running for city council. But one of the things that I said I want to do, I was doing excavation and development work for subdivisions and everywhere I went was five foot sidewalks that you brought up. In our city, there are four foot sidewalks. So something that you'll see that's one of the older changes that I specifically changed was we required five foot sidewalks. Now I didn't get elected, so then I had to collaborate with some of the other ones that did get elected. And I helped write that code and present it even as just a citizen and said, push this forward. And sure enough, they voted on it and got it done, but.
You see with a four foot sidewalk, it looks like it went down to Brookhaven. Those are four foot sidewalks.
And everything now is all five foot and it's a big difference of being able to walk down a sidewalk side by side. So that's one of the very first changes I ever made before I even got elected. But that's something that I pushed through, just, just trying to get elected.
Do you guys have a question you'd like to answer?
Questions?
So you guys kind of addressed this a little bit, but we all know growth's going to happen, right? As much as we don't want to say that, that we, as much as we want to stay rural, we're going to grow. And everyone says, well, we want to be the ones that control how that growth happens, not letting the developers and things like that. So for you three, when you say that you want to control what that growth looks like and you want to have us have the voice, what does that growth look like for you? And how will that growth impact our city if it happens the way that you want it to?
You'll be glad to start.
We've kind of lost Craig.
I'll say too much, is he off?
So Melanie, I think that's a really good question. And the first thing I would say is I don't think we're looking to stop growth or even restrict it or retard it. We need growth to be successful and to be, and to be viable as a city and as a community. It's the type of growth, the pace of growth and what that growth looks like when it builds out. I think those are the things we have to be very contemplative of. And so what does it look like to me? I mean, I've heard projections that we're going to fill this valley wall to wall with housing and/or other infrastructure. I don't see that as a, as a realistic outcome in Eagle Mountain and in the Cedar Valley. What I do see, I mean, as we've looked at it, there's going to be a couple of things that really limit us. Water is one, okay? I mean, Jared and I have been working on this a little bit. This is one of the things that I really, I put my foot down on this earlier in the year. We had, we had our staff member and a developer who came to us and wanted us to promise or to enter into a contract to make water available to them off of our contract. It's important that we understand a little bit about water. The city has very specific contracts with Central Utah Water Conservancy District for X number of acre feet. Then we also have paper water, which is associated with wells that we can drill a hole in the ground and then, then take that water out of the ground. So they're two different water sources. There is a capacity issue with the paper water. The paper water and the wet water that comes out of wells are not always consistent. They don't always match up. There's usually more paper water than there actually is capacity of wet water to dry out of that well. We're not talking about that water, okay? The water that we put some restrictions on in January and that I lobbied the council, the one thing you have to learn about or that you need to know is a council member can do zero by him or herself. They're very much ineffective. They have no authority and no power. The only way that you can actually produce any results is to lobby and to build a consensus with a team that allows you to get to three, at least three of you, so that you can get anything done. And we've built good consensuses over the last several years. So on the water issue, I could see, because I've done some independent studying, as a council member, I have access to every contract that we are obligated on for water to provide to whichever developer, whichever, whichever person that we are required to provide that water to. And so I'd done some studying and I'd looked at it. And when this, this last request came to us, I got really nervous and anxious because to me it felt like we were starting to put in jeopardy if we entered into that contract to agree to provide so much water to a developer for residential use that we're getting into an area where we might not have enough water to develop the commercial and industrial uses, hospitals and other uses that we want to come to our valley. And so I convinced the council to pass an ordinance with me that now does not allow our city to sell any water off of our Central Utah Water Conservancy District contract for residential use. That's a little bit problematic for the residential developers that want to come build. The intent is not to restrict that growth, but to be intentional about the development that we're going to help support with our water shares that remain on our contract so that they're economic, they're an economic benefit to the citizens who own that contract and not to the development community that wants to just come in and develop as many houses and stack them as high and deep as they can get away with and then walk away and leave us with the responsibility of taking care of it. So that's what we did, was able to convince council to do that. That's exactly where we're at. And I think we've got at least enough water to make sure that we get some of those uses in place that will benefit you as taxpayers and keep your tax burden low. Craig came and went, is that him trying to join?
Maybe.
So while he's coming back, I just basically did a touch on. Sure. I'll just.
Did you hear the question?
Did you hear the question Craig?
Yeah, yeah, I heard it.
Okay, just real quick, I'll touch on some of that and then Craig can go. But it's somewhat what I've already stated, the zoning code and things like that's what's already restricted some of that growth. But more on, I think the question is more about the planning side of it and how we plan for it to come to develop. Some of the things that Brett touched on on the last one, the 58 foot frontages compared to 40s. I think the open space ideas, you know, making sure that we maintain the open space. Originally in the city ordinances, it was 30% open space. That's how we got the golf course back in the olden days. So maintaining those kind of uses and keeping the, and then, and then I always talk a lot about balance and growth. So look, I know a lot of very wealthy people that employ my services and some of them live in condos and they say they love that. That's the type of life they like. They travel a lot, they can lock the door and never look back. They're in a single family home, you got to worry about watering and mowing your grass and the roof leaking and the heater going or whatever. They have zero responsibility. So I understand that there's all types of people that like different styles of living. But I think what I'm stressing there is the balance in the growth is that we have both the condo style and townhomes, but also the family homes and the move up homes to the estate homes. So I think it's, it's a balance. And then obviously with the restrictions going from where we were to where we are is just hands down, we're in a better place. And then just having a vision to let that grow. I think we need a downtown, we're working on a downtown project right now. And that's going to be a gathering place, a place to conduct business, a place to, to have leisure activities and dinners and stuff like that, restaurants and maybe even more dense in that area. For me, I'm, I'm okay with downtown being a little bit more hustle and bustle. But as you get outside into the, further out, I think that that's where we need to make sure that we allow for the other uses. So there's a little bit for everybody in that, in that scenario. So that's the way I would say that, mostly again, pointing out what we've already done and then making sure that we continue with that vision for, for smart, responsible growth and economics especially. So go ahead Craig.
Thank you for your patience with my technology issues here. I switched over to my cell phone hotspot to see if that's better. So I've got to, just to give the listeners a background as to where I'm coming from on this. I have a master's degree in real estate development. I have a certificate in urban planning and I don't like to talk about it necessarily, but I'm like the number one graduate that came out of that class and got a business management undergraduate. I own a real estate brokerage that's closed hundreds of millions of dollars of transactions. Sorry, myself, I've closed that many, my brokerage in addition to that, thousands more transactions. And so I know, and I've closed lots of subdivisions. I know the developers and I know them really, really well. I've got friends who, I know the land acquisition managers for almost all the big companies, a lot of small companies and they know me on a first name basis. And so you would think that, that being the case, you would think that Craig is going to be 100% for high density in Eagle Mountain. And obviously that's not the case. That's the, one of the main reasons why I'm here, to be your representative and your voice, to be able to, in an educated manner, negotiate with these developers. I know what their plans are. I know the battle plans, I've read the battle plans. I know exactly what kind of lots they're looking for. I know the densities they're looking for. I know how much money they're willing to pay the landowners for those things. I know what kind of contracts that they use for these types of transactions. And I've negotiated such contracts and I've represented developers in front of other planning commissions and city councils. Here's the issue with density in Eagle Mountain right now is we don't have enough employers within Eagle Mountain City to be able to have density. And so homes are being built and people are having to commute to other communities in order to have their employment. And that's causing the infrastructure problems on our roads. And understanding the nuances as to why developers are requesting what they're requesting and how we can in an educated manner respond back to them and negotiate with them is really critical. They, they respect me and they understand that what we want here in Eagle Mountain has to be done in the right timing. So for instance, yes, once we have lots of employers here, it makes a lot more sense to have a bit more dense type of an environment where people can live right next to where they work. But that's not the situation now, nor can our roads support that. And so the important thing is three members of the city council will determine the outcome of density in the city of Eagle Mountain. You need three that are going to stand firm and understand the, the timing as to when that can happen. And it's not, it's not now. Now there are already 25,000 lots approved approximately that we can't really do much about. But we also need to take that into effect as other developments are being approved. And part of what I will bring to the table here is I will be an anchor on this, on the, on the, the voice, for the voice of the citizens who are saying that we are, they are growing at a little too fast of a rate. The citizens that say, I wish that there were larger lot sizes that I could choose from. And when I say large lot sizes, I'm not talking huge lots, right? It's the people want a little bit larger than what's going on. And I will be an anchor for that. I was an anchor for that on the planning commission as well when we were reviewing subdivisions. There was one that Edge Homes brought to me, brought to us that I disagreed with their, their lot sizes and I asked them to increase their lot sizes because we're currently in a situation in Eagle Mountain where we have grown by like 30,000 residents in literally only five years, something like that. So massive, we've got strain upon our infrastructure, sewer, water and roads. And we're not, I, I'm, what's not going to happen with me is 8,000 lot subdivision approvals. That's not going to happen. That's not, that's, it's not wise for our city right now. But you will see a few other things our city doesn't currently have, senior housing. I'm working on that right now. We don't have those options and I'm okay with high density senior housing. They do not provide problems to our roads. They're great, they're great consumers and they bring a lot of great wisdom and also just intergenerational connectivity with their kids and grandkids. We need more seniors in Eagle Mountain, but we just don't have the right housing types for that. So you're going to see situationally some density added, but particularly for me when it comes to senior housing or in circumstances, for instance, when we need to negotiate for the acquisition of trails for mountain biking or the wildcat corridor, the city appropriately should reward that landlord with additional type of density options that would give them more money sufficient to, for the trade that they would give us for the land. So there are going to be some things like that. But generally speaking, we are going to have a housing environment here that will be unlike any other place in the city of Utah because we have enough land to where we can, we can create what's a balance of housing like Jared and Brett both said. And I'm looking forward to that. This is not going to be, we're not going to be city that's heavy one way or the other. We're not going to be heavy on tiny lots and we're not going to be heavy on big lots. And we're going to have a nice blend and a nice mixture where people can start here and they can upgrade here and then they can upgrade more if they want. And then they can also stay here and get into a senior housing and never have to leave this community. And so we're going to create a unique community. I'm looking forward to doing it with these two gentlemen here and make an Eagle Mountain that is stronger than it's ever been city that cannot, other cities will not be able to compete with what Eagle Mountain can do. And I'm super excited about that.
So for the setbacks and the side yard requirements, it, what can be done? Or is anything being done to make actually affordable small homes on larger, I mean, not larger lots, but not building the house as big as they possibly can on the smallest lot? Because at this rate, my kids are now, my oldest is 11 and I'm already planning on him never being able to be more.
Do you want to start with that Craig?
Yeah, I, I'll bring in one thought on affordability. Let me bring in two quick thoughts on the affordability issue, but I love what you're saying. So you go, so the state of Utah actually has the largest median house size at 2,800 square feet, larger than any state in the entire United States. So one of the challenges in terms of affordability is we are building homes that are too big in terms of like the affordability of things. And something I am in favor for is smaller building, smaller homes in order to hit that smaller price point, but not, but not decreasing the lots, like in, in having tiny lots. Because I think that, and also will defeat the purpose. I believe there's a product type that you're talking about that we as a city council can help bring to the city and that is having decent lot sizes with smaller homes. We can do that. That product does not exist pretty much anywhere, but we can make it happen here because of how we could do development, development agreements and how we can alter the code. how we could do development agreements and how we can alter the code. I think that's, that's an awesome question and what you ask is actually profound question and we can make it happen. But I'll just touch briefly on affordability. For Eagle Mountain City, I co-authored the Down Payment Assistance Program, which is the most accessible down payment assistance program in the entire state of Utah. You can go up to 100%, 120% of area median income. That's one of the highest I've seen it among any cities. And so it's not just for the people that are, that are just like paycheck to paycheck. Like you can actually have 120% of the area median income and still qualify for this grant. It's upwards of something like $25,000 for a down payment assistance and it is forgiven over a period of years. So that's one thing to know about in terms of affordability. We've done some things with RDA dollars that is helping bring affordability to the residents of Eagle Mountain. You do not have to be a certain occupation to qualify for that, by the way. Then the second thing is, for people who are massively struggling, and this is just a quick tangent, for people who are massively struggling and they want a pathway to homeownership and need something like closer to a payment that's equate, that you would equate to like a 4% interest rate, go check out Rocky Mountain Homes Fund. It's rmhf.net. Go to that website, apply. It's a private organization that I exclusively represent. There's not one other broker in the state of Utah that represents this group and they do help provide a pathway to homeownership for people who are struggling that, that would not otherwise struggle if the payment were down in say the 4% range. So for people that are in that category, check that place out because it is great for affordability. And I'm providing homeownership to individuals, doing so through a private organization instead of through the public organization or through the government.
Yeah, I can go last.
Yeah, it's a great question, Emily, and in fact, we are working on some of those things. I mean Craig talks about he and Jacinda Montano were the two who actually orchestrated how our RDA dollars were gonna be spent, but we pressed that forward. I mean, we've had, we've collected $3.5 million of RDA funding that's specifically tied to affordable housing initiatives and zero of it has been put to work yet until this year. So we recognize the need, we recognize that the resource existed and so we approached Craig and we approached Jacinda through our staff and as a council to ask them to help us develop something that would have some meaningful results for people who wanna live in Eagle Mountain City. In addition to that, we've been talking to several developers about producing small single family homes on smaller lots, but still livable lots, okay? That perhaps don't have a garage, they have a carport. I mean, that's the first house I lived in was just like that. Doesn't have a garage, has a carport. Maybe it's one level and it's 1,100 square feet, two bathrooms and three bedrooms and they're little bedrooms. But the reality of it is, is that the conversations we've had with some of those developers, several different developers, we're starting to foster some, some, some ideas that are coming together and are, what we're really trying to achieve is homes in the 350 to 375 range for a single family home. How many of those do you think the development community could sell if they could produce them and put them on a lot that's functional? Everyone of them before they're ever even built, right? And so we're in, we're actually in conversations, we're looking at very specific pieces of ground. We've had presentations from Fieldstone Homes, we worked with Mr. Hazard, we've worked with other developers to really start to develop this idea. Couple of locations that we've kinda targeted and you should look forward to that coming before council in the very near future. So it's a great question, it's absolutely something we're aware of. It's something that we're working on to try and find a path forward because I got kids and I got grandkids, just as you have kids, I got grandkids as old as yours. And so I'm concerned about that and I'm concerned about what are they gonna be able to do to afford a home, whether they're only 11 or 12 now, or even my daughter who's 20, she's 26, you know, how is she gonna purchase a home because she's renting right now? So it's a concern that we all share.
So I love this question and I knew I could go last because this is something that nobody else would touch on, but everything Brett said as a council, we commissioned Jacinda Montano and Craig to help us implement that plan, especially where its expertise is in their field. So we appreciate that and collaborating together as a council. But I wanna highlight something that I did recently. The governors came out with, he's gonna monthly have some summits on different state issues. And his very first one, of course, is one of our biggest issues in the state, is the fair housing initiative. And when I found out that that was what the topic was gonna be, I immediately called our mayor and said, I have got to be in that room. I have a plan, I've got something that will actually work that will help us control the housing crisis and all the while by getting the houses that we need. The governor talks about, we're 35,000 homes short on the Rosatch Front and things like that. And so I called the mayor up and I said, hey, I've gotta get in that room, I wanna be at that summit. They only allowed two seats per city and they only invited 40 cities in the state. Some of them that already had some initiatives were on panels and others that they're working with, they're in high growth areas. The mayor said that he'd get back to me and of course he took a different council member. I said, that's, I don't use names, it doesn't matter who he took. It's not important. He chose someone else besides me and I'm gonna tell you, not any fault of anybody's, everybody here is trying to tackle this problem. I really feel like I've got a plan. I'm gonna tell you right now, my plan's awesome, everybody that's heard it absolutely loves it. I think Craig's heard it, at least an overview of it, but I don't talk about it publicly, especially on these recordings. If you wanna hear about my plan, that's awesome, you have to contact me personally and I'm happy to go through my entire plan. But in a nutshell, it has to do with raw ground prices and raw ground prices, the more density you can put on there, the higher it's worth. So how do we keep the pricing there is control the raw ground price and that's the only X factor in this. Sticks and bricks are the same no matter how many you put in there. It's the same price. If you build a 10,000 square foot home or 1,000 square foot home, lumber is lumber, bricks are bricks, plumbing's plumbing, it's by the foot, it's by the pounds, by the, whatever it is you're buying. So the only X factor in this is raw ground and I've got a plan to fix that. And so I'll just say that that's kinda my plan. Now back to my story, I told the mayor, I said, don't worry, I will be in that room. And of course, nobody believed me. I had to call every state senator, every representative, everybody in the cabinet at the governor's office and I'm gonna tell you right now, I was sitting in that room. I pitched my plan to the Governor Institute and also Ivory, it's basically the equivalent of the Governor Institute founded by Clark Ivory. And I was able to get some time with those guys and explain my plan. They originally told me it wouldn't work because people that can't afford houses, can't afford houses even if you make them cheap, because they don't know how to control their spending. And I says, well then we don't really have a problem. So I was able to tell those guys, I argued with them for quite a while about the idea of, they wanna tell us we have a problem, but nobody's willing to solve it. And at the end of the day, they finally said, you know what, we're onto numbers because I think you've got a good idea. So long story short, you can see how tenacious I am, I would not quit and not be in that room with the governor and get some face time with those people who are gonna tackle a problem that I know that I have a solution for. So I believe my solution will work. It's not gonna work in every area, but it will work statewide and especially work here in Eagle Mountain, at least in designated areas to help us both achieve affordability and achieve the, just the sheer numbers of housing that we need. I got asked a question the other day about a homelessness problem, it was actually Saturday at the farmer's market. I've been known to help the homeless, you can actually see a post on my Facebook just this week about a homeless guy that I helped out. So it's just some interesting stuff in the housing and I'm gonna leave it at that, but anybody who wants to hear more, my phone number's published, call me up, hit me up on Facebook, I'm happy to tell you the rest of the story on my housing plan and I'm telling you it's a good one.
As we work with these developers, I'm sorry Craig, as we work with the developers, the X factor is always the raw, the ground cost, it's not the building, because you can control that. But as soon as they have to invest so much money into that ground, what they look at it and do is they say, we're not putting a cheap house on this and selling it for nickels on the dollar, we're gonna put the biggest house we can fit on that, make it three stories tall and then sell it because it has more square footage to the highest, at the highest price that we can get out of it. Craig?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there are two other principles that are really important to this that I know Jared and Brett are both 100% proponents of and that is deed restricting these affordable housing units to owner occupied. That's one of the critical things. We don't wanna create a huge community of transient renters and so these will all be owner occupied, serving the very purpose, homeownership. And so that's one of the key elements and the other element Brett touched on, but I wanna make it a little bit more just recognized here. There will not be seeds of affordable homes, like huge communities of affordable homes. These will be sprinkled in various areas throughout the city and that will be, that's strong for multiple reasons. Those won't bring down any neighborhood. In fact, I firmly believe they will bring up the neighborhoods and neighbors will be strong neighbors to these people in the affordable housing programs. And so I'm really excited about the way this council has gone about it. They're going up the right way. This is going to be the Eagle Mountain way, we're going to lead in the affordable housing situations.
Yeah, as you mentioned, of course, my plan gave away a little bit of it, but there's two deed restrictions, has to be owner occupied, right? That's, that's the key, is it can't be owned by an investor. So to keep it affordable, it will for a lifetime be owner occupied.
How do you control that?
So deed restrictions, it's part of a deed. So the question was, how do you control that? Yeah, so in the deed, in your title, there's a portion of your title that says you have to be owner occupied. You can't rent it, you can't sell it to a corporation, so.
I know some violet, you're saying.
Well, if it's deed restricted, they might not be deed restricted. That might be an H O A thing, but the deed restriction could be, is crucial in this.
And in some areas, Emily, I mean, in some areas, I own a townhome in Lehigh that is, that has this restriction. There's only a certain number of units that can be used for non-owner occupied purposes and you have to qualify for that. Get on the list so that your unit can then be rented and I own one of those that I had to go through that process on. And my mom just purchased one in Saratoga Springs that even though it's her, my stepbrother who's living there, it's her son who's living there, she went through the process of having that unit qualified so that she could rent it if she needs to or chooses to, if and when he's not going to live there. Does that make sense? But, but the reason that, we did the same thing out on some, we just did these out on Eagle Mountain Boulevard. There were some of those, they came back in and they needed an adjustment to their MDA. They weren't required to be deed restricted and we told them we would consider the adjustment that they were seeking, but in order to do that, they would have to deed restrict 80% of their units to owner occupied so that someone would have to purchase it to live in and they agreed to do that. So we've been pursuing that pretty vigorously in the city.
All right, I'll ask this question. What are you going, let's see, sorry. What are they doing or what would they do to bring high paying jobs into Eagle Mountain?
That's a good question. Anybody, anybody? This is actually a tough thing. Economic development is the engine of what keeps the taxes low for citizens. And for me, even when I first started on planning commission and through my runs of city council, I obviously want high paying jobs. I think some of the best high paying jobs are with schools and hospitals. So we already sold some land just recently, a year or two ago to IHC. There's some other hospitals that have bought land and looking at land here in Eagle Mountain. But in fact, I forgot about this earlier when we were talking about housing and whatnot, I'm also a proponent of property rights, you know? So it's hard when we're talking about that growth, I was gonna talk about property rights and I got sidetracked. But when you own property, you know, to balance that responsible growth with, with no growth and too much growth, right? Because I believe that people have the right to quiet enjoyment and to be able to do with their property what they wish and then also to be able to have highest and best use. That's, that's property use rights right there. So, but we can still guide that and we can still control that in certain areas. So with that, the economic development, of course, in our commercial areas, we're pushing for good, high paying education type campuses, college campuses, hospitals, some of those things. Manufacturing, we have a lot of land set aside for some of those industrial areas, but it's just getting them to see value in Eagle Mountain. And of course, we can't force a company to come here. We encourage, we persuade and as, of course, it's talked about a lot, the RDAs, the TIFs, the tax incentives for larger companies. It's, we can't give TIFs, it's against a lot of giving TIFs to commercial businesses at this point. The state made that change. But industrial uses still do qualify and we're working with those to try to bring in some of those higher paying jobs and keep them local. So there's a lot of great big companies that are coming and great jobs will come with that. And I wanna talk about this too, just real quickly with economic development, it's easy, balance. Our teenagers need jobs too. Doctors need jobs, teenagers need jobs, the kids going to school need jobs while they're going to school. So I think what I would say is it's important to remember just balance in the economy and make sure that we have something for everyone out here and jobs to, kind of enough jobs to go around for everybody. But yes, we are working on some of that and some of what we can't talk about all the time, but I think that's what we're doing.
I mean Jared's not wrong. I think the best thing that we can do is create an economic climate here in Eagle Mountain that welcomes business. Some of that is done through zoning and other practices. I mean, we have a regional technology and industrial overlay zone. We took a look at that when I, the first year I was on council, I worked with Councilman Burnham to adjust some of those entitlements in the RTI zone, just to review them, to make sure that they were still serving the needs of the citizens and creating a runway for industrial development to land. Might be medical campuses, I mean, we've talked to universities and campuses. The other thing I think that we can do, so that, I think that's produced some really good results. And in fact, I was on the phone today, talking to our economic development director, just reviewing the TIFs and the status of the tax increment financing on all of the big data centers that we've, well, that's a nice little visitor. You better bring that out here and show everybody.
My daughter lives there.
I didn't expect a ferret to come say hello. It's always interesting at Angelina's home. Anyway, so that's one of the ways I think that we've made some real progress and if we can get those data centers to be able to produce what they want to produce in Eagle Mountain, solve the power equation, that's one of the big issues for them right now, and get them to go vertical where they start to trigger those TIFs, especially on those secondary and tertiary development agreements, there's going to be some very significant economic revenue that that will generate and put in the city's coffers that becomes unrestricted. It goes in the city's general fund and we can use it for anything to benefit the citizens. Roads, parks, you want a rec center, if there's enough money in there, those guys can help fund it. And then everyone says that, let's get Facebook to pay for it. It won't likely be Facebook, but it could be some of the secondary tertiary data centers that will actually fund something like that when there's enough revenue to pay for it and then to mute the negative fund balance that each of those create. Right now, Lehigh's running about a $2.5 million deficit a year. So it's significant. The other thing I think we can do is make sure that our transportation corridors make sense and that they make it easy for business to get in and out of the city. That's something I've been working on with Mr. Ward and with, so with Rich Ward and with Jared. Thieves have worked pretty hard even since we were on planning commission to get the Mid Valley Highway Expressway. Moved up on a priority scale. I mean, it's been talked about for years, we've talked about it, telling boom in the face, but what we haven't done is gotten tired of advocating for it. I mean, we've taken, I've taken people up on top of the mountain in my UTV, including state and federal officials, to make them look at what that road would do and to stand on top of that mountain. And I've taken most every council member up there with me and I took Angie in here who said it's too steep and they'll never be able to build and come down off that backside. But that's a road that we finally got now on the transportation corridor. That's a road that we had Mountain Land Association of Governments donate $250,000 in a grant to do a study, but we're expecting those results to come back to us in July, so this month. And then it's a matter of starting to lobby UDOT and/or Mountain Land Association of Governments to help us with some of the funding for corridor preservation. So Jared's been working hard with our lobbyist to line him up, Mr. Stewart, and to get him pointed in the right direction so that the moment we have that study, that we are lobbying the right people to go find those funds. And because of the, because of that study and because of the alignments that we've been reviewing, we haven't settled on one yet, but we found one that's pretty economical as roads go. I mean, it's not economical, but it's economical as roads go, okay? Most of us wouldn't pour that change out of our pocket and pay for it. But if we can get UDOT and Mountain Land Association of Governments and the city to contribute in that, we've been working with Saratoga Springs to make sure that we're meeting their expectation when that, when that road comes from Quarry B Ride up Hidden Canyon and drops down right into Mountain D Quarter about where the LDS temple is at in Saratoga Springs. So I think that'll be significant. The other thing that Rich and I have been working on this last six months is a road connection from Ranches Park where right where the Maverick is at, that will run up and over the hill, 122 foot ride away, we're gonna look a little bit at this tomorrow night, that will drop down into Wild Blossom Boulevard and connect into Saratoga Springs, which is connected, it's 95 feet when it gets there, it's connected into Mountain D Quarter now. So we talked to the landlord, we were at a meeting like this with him, he happened to be in the audience like this, and I just asked him to speak to the people who were there with him about that. And he said he's been 15 years trying to get councils and staff to help him figure that out and until Rich and I approached him and said, we have to make this work and it really pressed him, because there's some challenges with it and there've been some challenges with some of the other property owners. Said he didn't think that that would ever happen. So we just got a quick... So we just got to quick pace moving things and we need to plan broadly and from a global perspective of how to do it. We had an application and we've looked at something over there that was really myopic in its scale and scope. And they want to put a little road in and we said, no, we need to look at this globally and make sure that we're, that we're planning for a regionally and significant road connectivity in that area. So those are some of the things that we can do, I think, to make the economics work and to try and bring business in here that will, that will have high paying jobs.
So, so I've got a couple of things to add. Okay, so just a few quick things to add on the economic development. One, in order to bring businesses here, we need to bring business owners here as well. And so to bring a business owner here, they're going to be looking for a luxury estate. There, there, it's, so it's still important, we talked about affordable housing. We cannot forget the other side of the equation. We have to still develop some luxury style neighborhoods that will attract wealthy individuals that have businesses. Cause they tend, people tend to live where they, near where they work. And we have seen this principle play out over and over and over again as cities have developed over the years. So it's a very proven principle that you have to bring luxury housing to a neighborhood, to a city as well. So we can't forget that part. Second, um, rooftops, so, so commercial follows rooftops. This is how it works. You need a certain number of rooftops, in other words, a certain number of residents in order to then attract commercial, to attract businesses. And so it, our population is growing and with time, businesses will naturally attract. Now, in the meantime, one of the advantages I bring to the table and asset that I could bring to the city council is I do know a lot of brokers, a lot of real estate folks and that, that also are commercial real estate folks. And I can tap into the resources, if there's a certain retailer you're looking for, say Craig, what can we do to get this retailer? Well, I, I can't promise you to bring the retailer, I can promise you to figure out what they're looking for. Trader Joe's would be amazing and that's one of, the one my wife wants. Well, I haven't, I haven't reached out to them to figure out what their, you know, what their analyses are, but I know the land acquisition managers for lots of different kinds of companies. And I just talk to them and say, okay, what are you looking for to, what qualifies? What do we need? At least we can figure that part out. But, but Brett hit on something, this is, so this is vision, uh, vision related. We need to leave enough space to attract the people that we don't even know yet need to be here, uh, for businesses. And, and like he said, college campuses. Saratoga Springs and Lehigh cannot compete with Eagle Mountain on our land space. So we are a natural choice for a college campus at some point, a big medical campus at some point, things like that. And so what the current city council can do and then what they have been doing, we're going through the future land use map right now, the planning commission's helping with that. We need to ensure we leave a big, open spaces dedicated to this kind of use, institutional type of use in order to, to attract those people, uh, in, in the future. So those are a few things and I'll throw one other economic development thing out there. A few, actually a couple. We need to play the fiddles that only Eagle Mountain can play. Like we just had an amazing rodeo. That is great for the community, for bringing us together. We need to make the rodeo bigger. That is a great economic event for, for Eagle Mountain. We need to play that fiddle. Another fiddle that we need to keep playing is we have an airport. Now, maybe there's a discussion about moving the airport, but I think the fact remains, we need to make sure that Eagle Mountain has a viable airport. We'll be able to compete against our neighbors, again, Lehigh, Saratoga Springs and others that don't have airports. And we will have one and we'll have a great one and someday it's going to get bigger and better. These are the things that we're talking about now, planning for the future. Because if we don't plan for them now, they won't, there won't be an opportunity for these things in the future.
So you guys all kind of touched on it, um, but as a business owner, I've looked at bringing business to Eagle Mountain and it was not economically feasible. And so what are some things, because our city is grossly disproportionate in residential to commercial, um, property out here. What is your plan moving forward to help increase that? Because we all know if we want the amenities, like rec center, it, it needs to be paid for, so why not have businesses pay for it, right? Instead of the tax burden on our residents. So what kind of plan do you have to help make it beneficial for businesses to come to Eagle Mountain?
Go ahead, Craig, we'll go backwards.
Okay, so start with me, that sounds good. So, uh, we've talked about this a little bit before. One of the critical, um, pieces of our growth here in Eagle Mountain is the data centers. And the data, in terms of the amount of economic benefit the data centers will bring, it's something that the residents don't know. And I think as a city, we really should somehow get the word out about this. Cause when I first moved to Eagle Mountain, I was anti-data center because they don't employ very many people. Now, what they do employ, they do employ a blue collar workforce in the construction. And it's a massive benefit to, to us in that regard. But we need the data centers because they bring in a significant amount of tax, not just to our, through property tax, real property tax, but also through what's called a municipal energy tax. Eagle Mountain City gets six percent of, of an energy tax that's created by these data centers, both in onsite generation. So these data centers have the ability to, um, put a natural gas power plant to help fuel their, fuel and energize their needs. The city gets to tax that, they get to tax the, the, the energy creation, the energy use. And we're, we're talking that this amount, and Jared and Brett can speak to numbers more specific than this. If, the economic output that these, that these entities will provide us, not also to, like to our schools, but also to our general operating fund in the city is so massive that we will, we will be the economic engine of, of, of Northern Utah County, maybe all of Utah County because of these, of the data centers. They, the, the numbers are huge. Plus it's going to take billions of dollars. It's a, it's a multi-billion dollar investment from these data center companies to build these. And again, Brett and Jared can talk about both of that. But the reason why I bring that up is that is the economic base the city needs in order to then move forward and solve our sewer issues, to solve the fact that our, our city employees are working out closets and we need a bigger space for them to work. And then, and then it also allows for, uh, like the warrants such as a recreation center, which is something I support in, in, in its right timing, I support the recreation center. Even though it's a lot, even though it's usually a loss in terms of an annual draw upon the city, there will be so much money coming in from the data centers to supply that loss. And so I think when we talk about economic development, we, we can't really, we, we've got to put this right in the crosshairs to, for, so the citizens can understand how critical it is for the development, for the data centers to be a part of this equation. And once they're a part of that equation, infrastructure becomes a much easier thing to handle in a lot of ways. It's going to help us with the roads and the sewer and the water. It's going to help us with, uh, the, you know, the, the civic center that we are going to need. And, and suddenly sort of creating the infrastructure and the environment that will make it very enticing for people, for, for businesses to come here. But I, I will, but let's, I mean, we got to talk about the headwinds we're up against. We are not along I fifteen. Because we're not along the I fifteen corridor, it is going to be tough for some employers who are trying, trying to draw upon employees from across the Los Hetch front to decide to position themselves in Eagle Mountain, like in city center, Cedar Valley, as opposed to out, out near the freeway. Which is why it's so critical that the, the roads we're talking about now, getting like the, the Mid Valley Highway, S R seventy-three is going to be growing and Mountain View Corridor. Once all this stuff connects and it's free rate, some of them we're dealing with like freeways and fast expressways, it will be, it will be more possible at that point to attract some of these businesses. And I'd be curious, but this is, I'm going to let Brett and Jared go. But I would be curious what kind of business you were thinking of bringing here. But, um, anyway, I, I think that just rounds out some of where, you know, when you say, what can we do to make sure, sort of to attract these businesses? It's sort of that pathway, like that's why we need data centers. We need the data centers for the infrastructure, we need the infrastructure for the businesses.
I mean, Craig's absolutely right. One of the things, Melanie, I think that we need to focus on, and we are, is trying to create areas of economic opportunity that are in close proximity to those population centers that are outside of our city. That's part of why that road connection from Ranches Parkway over into Wildflower onto the Wild Blossom Boulevard is really critical. They're about done extracting that gravel in that area. And so that road network is going to make that connection and that whole area is about six hundred acres. And it's slated for some industrial and some commercial development. And I think we need to do what we can to attract business there. We've got some fun ideas about the city center, the hub is what we're calling it. Um, I think that's what it's going to land on. And when you see kind of the design, if you haven't already, you should just Google it and look at it. It looks like the spokes of a wheel in a center area. And it really will become the hub of our city. And I think that we need, and, and part of what we're contemplating is having a business incubator space there so that we can let mom and pops come in and utilize that, perhaps even at a discount, to give them a chance to prove their concept and to, to get into a storefront and to move from an at-home business to a little mini storefront and then into something larger, what you're pursuing in Saratoga Springs. And I'm still challenged by the fact that you chose them over us to put your thing. But the economy of it made the most sense to you and that's what we're battling. And so that, those are the discussions that we're trying to have is so that we can, look, I love my, my fellow council members on the Saratoga Springs Council. Nothing makes me happier than to steal a business from them. So I'm happy about that. We'll bring that sales tax leakage here and, and capture some of it so that it's going back in the pockets of Eagle Mountain residents. And I, I want to just take thirty seconds and talk about sales tax because I don't think most people understand how sales tax revenues are distributed or how they come to the city. Because that, that represents, last time I looked at it was about twelve million dollars before Walmart was entitled. Sales tax dollars are collected at the point of sale. So wherever you purchase something, whatever municipality that you're in or county, if it happens to be a county, fifty percent of that sales tax goes directly into the coffers of that municipality. So if you're buying gas into the mountain, fifty percent of that sales tax that you're paying on that gas goes into Eagle Mountain's coffers. The other fifty percent goes up to the state, it's all congregated. And then they redistribute what's left out of that fifty percent that's come from every other tax collecting entity. And they distribute it based on population. And we've been underserved because our population numbers have been, been utilized from the twenty twenty census data, which is way behind what we actually are. And I'm thankful our state representatives this year were able to work through a bill in the state legislature that now modifies that and it calculates our population based on, um, units or housing units. So anyway, it's a little fairer than what it's been. But I think it's important for people to understand that. It's why when people say buy local, they don't explain the why. But the reality of it is if you purchase your fuel here or you purchase your food here, one of the things with the Walmart entitlement that drove me to the yes side of that equation was at the time, our sales tax receipts in Eagle Mountain were about twelve million dollars. Do you know what they project the sales tax revenue from Walmart in one single year will be? One million. So it represents a twelfth of everything else that we've collected for the whole rest of the city from one, one store, one business. And so that's why in landing those businesses, I think the, the cat's out of the bag that there's at least maybe a grocer, that's probably what I would say. Others have said more, but. So, but look, I can't confirm or deny anything and I won't, but there's a sixty acre parcel of commercial ground that's in adjacency to this city hub that we want to see develop, that a developer has a real interest in coming in and really, really building that out. So you're going to start to see some synergistic things happen, Melanie, among the business community. We're right on the cusp of it and I'm excited by it.
So a few things I want to touch on in the, right at the end, that sixty acres you're talking about is huge. We are at the point of actually getting a lot of commercial, especially when you draw those hubs and then everything that comes around them with restaurants and other things. Uh, we saw that happen at Macy's. We've seen it, uh, it'll happen here with the Walmart. But what Craig touched on a little while ago was the rooftops. Uh, the other thing is trips per day. So there's no question that any business that can be somewhere where Mountain View and Pony Cross or Mountain View and Pioneer, trips per day are increased because multiple cities are going through there or I fifteen as mentioned. So trips per day, we're just at the end of the line where there's not as many trips. So it's a little harder to attract them. Uh, the other way to do it is through those hubs. Uh, with the Wildflower connection and that area and then the other sixty acres that may or may not be a grocer, um, I'm in that same area he's in, so anybody else can talk about it, but. Yeah, we've, we've, uh, been under an N D A. Yeah, and I wonder, uh, I don't know how they could hold us to that at this point, but we're going to stick to it. So it is what it is, but, uh, some businesses are coming. There's two other points that I wanted to make. One of them that I know you're talking about is fees. We've actually had to look at our fees to attract those businesses because here in Eagle Mountain, um, when we base, like every six years, we have to review our I F F Ps and the impact fees and the different things they charge for parks and, and other impact. And when you have a business like Walmart that's got a lot of square footage, for instance, compared to a home or other businesses that are smaller, those fees, when you use the multiplier that we were using, become unproportionate at a certain size. And, and I think that's even some of the smaller businesses that. So we've had to look at some different scenarios and ways that we could help massage that a little bit to make it more fair. Uh, where they, trust me, they still pay way more than, than you would assume, but to kind of equalize and level the paying for it. The second part of that, as I've already mentioned a minute ago on a different topic, Utah and Eagle Mountain, uh, in this area, we have the second highest raw ground prices in the nation. You'll never guess who's higher than us, Hawaii. Um, I don't know why they would want to charge more for raw ground, not because they have less or it's more beautiful. I said, not because they have less or it's more beautiful. It's, uh, you know, so, so that's a challenge to get businesses here when you've got the second highest raw ground prices and, and huge fees. And so those are all things that we're looking at and ways to help them get into that with, uh, with cheaper costs. Um, and then those fees and trying to help them with some development costs. So, because we can't do T I Fs, so making a pathway that they can get in, at a, at a reasonable price and conduct business because we get it all back through taxes. Yeah, water's one of the things that we have. Oh, and I wanted to point out too, Craig talked a lot about the taxes, both of you did about the sales tax and then the M E T. Uh, something that's kind of been on, of course, the social media platforms and whatnot, so rap tax. Uh, you talk about that M E T, we also get a sales tax on top of the M E T. So not only do they pay us to use the power, we tax them for buying it as well. So it's a absolutely huge, uh, windfall for the city. But the reason I, I mentioned the sales tax on the M E T is the rap tax is also on top of the sales tax on top of the M E T. So, um, when, when we get talking about this rap tax later on in the year, I think it's important to note that, that those businesses will be contributing a giant portion of that rap tax, which all goes back into recreation, arts and parks. And yes, it'll cost us citizens another penny at the, when we buy our soda or half of a penny even at a soda. But, uh, those businesses are going to contribute to that. Uh, the estimation, this is before any of those things we're talking about, last year we would have captured six hundred thousand dollars alone. Uh, once we start collecting on the M E T and those other sales tax, it's going to be a huge number that's going straight to our parks and recreation. So and arts, and I know you're an arts guy.
I just want to talk a little bit about M E T because you may ask the question, if the data centers are so popular and they're producing so much income through M E T, why aren't we feeling that currently? And I think that's a legitimate question. And the reason is the only one that has been triggered with the M E T of the data centers is Facebook. And their T I F negotiation was a zero M E T impact. So they're not paying an M E T from Facebook so long as, yet. So long as fifty percent of their energy comes from renewables. So I think that's an important equation for people to understand. And they're qualifying through Rocky Mountain Power to do that currently. But the other data centers who have entitlements, who are just starting to come out of the ground, who haven't triggered their T I Fs yet, two of them have zero M E T discounts. So they'll pay the full M E T. And one of them has the right or to build a natural gas power plant on their facility. And they're also collecting M E T on any natural gas that's consumed onsite. So they'll build a plus or minus the number I've heard to build the power plants, about two billion dollars with a B. Recognize that piece of property is going from a property tax value of fifty cents or whatever it is currently to a couple of billion dollars on just that footprint, that twenty or thirty acres for the gas power plant. And they'll be, they'll be sales tax collected when that is consumed and there'll be M E T that's paid. So when we talk about we're right on the cusp of it, we're right on the cusp of it. I'm looking forward to my kids and my grandkids benefiting from those things. Probably enough.
Ten, ten, ten seconds more on that. A ten seconds more is this. We also reduced the impact fees, at least we recommended to the planning, to the city council, I assume you moved forward with it, to reduce the impact fees to help businesses, to attract businesses here. Was that true? Did you, did you follow up with that recommendation?
Yeah, that's what Jared was saying.
Okay, sorry. I'm not political at all. This is my first time with this. But this question might make some people uncomfortable, but. But this question might make some people uncomfortable, but I'm sick of it. That has happened out here in Eagle Mountain and it's disgusting. So I have, my wife is white, so I have mixed kids. What are you guys gonna do with racism out here? Cause my kids be called nigger, go names, awful words. I've been called those names. My question is for you guys, because I've been taking my kids to Lehigh. I'm paying programs in Lehigh because Eagle Mountain disgusting. It, it made me frustrated. Like you can hear my voice, I'm really pissed. Because when I call the city chairman people that are in charge of some of the programs, they ask me, what do you want us to do? That's your job, figure it out. That's your job. I'm reporting you the issue. My kids has been basically discriminate by coaches and certain people that are white. Okay, let's just put it out there. They're white. I'm brown, clearly. And it's disgusting to me. And I've been attacked by parents, white parents surrounding me. Try to fight me, basically. And yeah, so what are you guys gonna do about that? Cause I'm willing to pay some other city programs for my children. And I have four kids. And it's very sad to see. Cause somebody warned me about Eagle Mountain and that issue. And I'm sick of it.
First, I'm gonna say this. I'm as disgusted as you are about that. I haven't experienced that. If I were standing there by your side when that occurred, I would stand up for you. Look, we have had some new issues and it's not appropriate. We're all human beings, first and foremost. You'll find I'm a teary guy, especially when I feel passionately about something. I have friends that are black, white and yellow. And I don't see them in those terms. They're my friends. I have friends who have religious beliefs that are completely different from mine. And I don't see them as people who have different beliefs. They're my friends. I have coworkers. And those who have different sexual orientation that I work with and that I deal with. And I don't see them with those labels. I see them as my friends and my coworkers. So I would just challenge anyone watching this to stand up and be accountable when you see those things. We are all individual, God's children, who deserve love and respect and the opportunity to be who we are, to be different from one another, both physically, mentally and spiritually. And so I'm really sorry that that's happening to you. I would like to spend a little time talking with you to see if we can't nail down what exactly you experienced. And, and, and if, so I, I want, so I want to talk with you about that to see if we can get to the specifics and some details about that, okay? But I just state unequivocally that that's inappropriate and not acceptable in my, in my world.
Yeah, and for me, I 100% agree with Brett. I'm on the same page. And my life shows that. And I know there's other people here with biracial marriages and so forth. And it's, I believe there's no place for it, first of all. And I personally work out of the country a lot, especially south of the border. I'm friends and very tight with some people. There are some at my house as we speak right now of a different race. I've talked about the homeless program. I really reach out. In fact, I, I don't brag about this or, in fact, I've never talked about it on the campaign trail. But I, I say I'm an equal opportunity employer. I employ a transgender. And I only have a couple of employees and I, one of them is a transgender person. So I'm very sensitive to that, that topic. And you know, and I, I just want to say there's no place for it. But I think it starts in the home. And I think part of the problems is, of course, fathers in the home. You hear this a lot about, Charlie Kirk talks a lot about it nationally. What can we do to, to instill better structures in the home as a government and those things? So obviously our programming, our education and things like that have to be better and then enforcement. I think the reason, there's no place for that. And the reason it still exists is because we're weak on enforcement. And I think when that happens, we have to get stiffer on hate crimes. And we have to punish those type of activities and make it to where it's not as accessible and not as enticing for people to think they can get away with it. Because if that happens, they're going to be prosecuted and going to be held to, held accountable. So I think for me, it's literally accountability and then education that starts in the home. In, in the, in the world, we're deteriorating in the home. Literally the values that are taught and the values that are instilled in the home. And that's, to me, it's a, it's a bigger issue than, than a city council or mayor could tackle on their own. But it's gotta start at the roots, which is in the home, which is in the city, which is in the state, which is in the nation. If we can't change it here in our city, how can we expect the state to do anything or the nation? So 100% agree and I'm with Brett, happy to find out if we can address that. But again, enforcement, education and starting with programs that we can help keep people together. And I think some of that's counseling. I think some of that's, especially, like I said, it starts with divorces, right? And keeping husbands in the home and, and things like that, so.
And I think especially, especially contacting these guys who are in the city and saying, this is the program, this is where it's at. Cause I did basketball, I coached. And it's a volunteer and a lot of them are volunteer. And if I heard about that, you know, I'd be letting these guys know so they could, like whoever's in charge.
I served in another volunteer organization, I'll say, without saying any names with, one of the guys I served with was Polynesian specifically. One of my favorite guys and he had adopted some black children and multiple different races. And one of those kids to this day stops by my house, probably at least monthly and calls me like a second dad. I, I helped him kind of spread his wings. And he was going down a bad path when he was 13, 14, 15. Literally did a 180 and, and to this day, his parents talk to me a lot of times about helping save their kid. And I says, I didn't do anything, I just loved him. I didn't do, and, and I think just showing that love and care for others is where we gotta start, just as a community as well. But I've shown that I, through my examples and that, that I'm obviously willing to tackle this problem. But it's, it's way bigger than what we can do and we've got to come together as a community to do that. So I don't want to take any more time from Craig too.
Okay, and maybe if you, I don't know, if you could turn the, the camera around so I could, they could see me as I'm talking, at least on this one. So, so a few, a few thoughts on this. And I'm really, really grateful that you brought this up. These are the kinds of questions we need asked in, in meetings like this. So I'm really grateful you, you were, that you did that. So let me give some perspective. So likewise, I'm an employer. I've got over 90 real estate agents that work for me. I own my own real estate brokerage. And in my brokerage, we have, we have multiple different Hispanic type of, you know, Hispanics from different countries. I've got a, a black individual that works for me as well, Asian, I mean, and then white. We have a mixture. And I'll tell you what I'm doing right now about this very specific thing. There are four words that I share and teach my brokerage. There's a four-word culture that we have. And that is love, serve, connect and transform. And every week at Tuesday at 11 o'clock, I have a meeting with everybody in the brokerage. And we talk about what did we do that week that involved the words love, serve, connect and transform. Has nothing to do with real estate, has everything to do with culture and has everything to do with leadership. We need to lead where we are, where we stand. And just like what Jared and Brett said, this, this unfortunately, this is a, this is a failure of parenting. This is a failure that's in the home. Parents need to do better. And frankly, this is, this underscores another issue we have in our society. Our society has taken religion and put it in a different box than the rest of society, as if those two cannot mix. And yet religion done right is, is one of the answers to what we're talking about here. Active religion. And so in my brokerage, what is great, all agents in my religion know that they can share their religious beliefs with one another without any fear. They know I'm going to do it, they do it. And we actively, one, one Thursday out of every month, we get together and talk about what we say a higher power. Cause we try to be respectful. Everybody has a little different view of what the higher power might be. But the fact remains, we have a higher power. And that how our power teaches us to love one another regardless of, of the color of our skin. That we are all brothers and sisters, that we are all children of God. And that's just the, the facts, the bottom line. And yet, and yet our government has removed and put religion in another box. And unfortunately, it's what we need. We need more of that in our society, people talking openly about it because it's one of the solutions. It is one of the solutions, but I can just tell you, I'm super glad again that you shared this. I'm telling you what I, what I do in my real estate brokerage. And I, I am happy to bring that same culture into the city government. Love, serve, connect. And all of that then creates what we, what, what the transforming process. Love, serve, connect leads to transformation. And that's something that I, that I, that would, I would help bring to city leadership. And, and I, and unfortunately, I'm not in the room with you after this meeting will end. I'm sure you will talk to Jared and Brett, but I, I'll talk to them later about the experiences you share with them. And again, thank you for being, being so open and sharing this with us.
So I'm gonna ask this question because it kind of goes along with it. So you all know, my daughter died by suicide a few years ago. Her in a pink shirt. But what can you do more for our youth? Because the suicide rates are, they're just high, really, really high. And they're going higher and higher. And I'm on the youth city council, so if any youth want to join, like we would love to have more youth on there. And Jared and Brett have both helped with the youth city council and have helped with the rodeo dances and activities and other things so that the youth are involved with other things. Cause I feel like it's very important for kids to have a purpose and to find goals and things that they can work on. So how else can you help our youth in our day to day?
Okay, I love this question too, and I love working with the youth. I, it's probably because I still think I'm 18 or 17 or whatever it is. Although my body's telling me I'm about 65, I'm in really rough shape. But man, I love the youth. And I, and I want to just for both these questions, say, I feel like I'm kind of the one that started this and it's caught fire and I'm proud of that for the idea of saying, ask us hard questions. I'm not afraid of hard conversations. And now I've seen that kind of, that culture go and, and seen everybody kind of attacking these harder questions, whether it comes from rate studies or, or race and suicide and things like that. If we can't talk about this, who can? And, and I think that's something that I've been saying throughout this campaign, specifically the last couple of months is, I'm not afraid of the hard questions. And, and I'm gonna tell you, I don't always know the answer. Sometimes I need to research that and find out what we can do. But I'm not afraid to say, we're not gonna dance around and that's my leadership. We will not dance around from these tough issues. So to me, it's literally, and you've heard it for years and years and years, there's nothing to do out here. I don't understand why kids say that. I grew up out here when there wasn't even this many people. I didn't even have friends. I walked around 40,000 acres out here trying to catch rabbits with my bare hands. And, and was very successful, by the way. I was good at it. You know, and I'd shoot a pellet gun and catch snakes and I hate snakes, by the way. But you know, I mean, I think there's plenty to do, but, but what the difference is and what I see the difference. I share a video sometimes that came from Nature Valley, actually. They, they've got some pretty cool videos about get off your device. I think the difference is when I was a kid, I didn't have a phone. I didn't have a pager. I didn't have any of that. So you had to kind of entertain yourself. And nowadays, I think the, these kids are brought up in that same culture that we're talking about behind a keyboard, behind a screen. You can kind of say whatever you want, sometimes even in person. And it's the same thing that leads to suicide and other problems is that this false sense of how perfect everybody else's life is on social platforms, et cetera. And then real life just doesn't seem like it's that good. So to me, I think we've got to, number one, create activities, make them fun. Allow for more outside, off the device opportunities for, for both youth and, and adults. And especially like I see the seniors do this. Brett and I actually together went to a senior luncheon the other day.
Can Brett, I'm just. I qualify. I'm old enough to be there.
I got invited, so. But I'm gonna tell you as a simple question, I mean, how many people, there was probably 45 people in that room, maybe more. And how many of them were looking at the phone while they were there?
Zip.
I didn't, I didn't see a single phone the entire two, three hours that we were there. And then you go to a, a high school or, you know, even middle school or younger. And I don't think there's one that's not on a phone within at least a certain amount of time or an iPad or whatever device they're using. And so I think really the root of this is we've got to provide opportunity to get their minds off of them what I feel like is fake or, or not always the reality and, and have an opportunity to get out here. And again, I, I kind of addressed some of the problem without necessarily as many of the solutions. Of course, I'm not just an advocate of the solutions. I provide the solutions. As Angelie said, I've hosted dances every other weekend last year. Of course, with the rodeo stuff, I'm one of the guys that brought the fireworks back that's gonna happen this weekend on the 4th with collaboration, but it was my idea. You know, and I brought it there. And then of course, this year somewhere in, I think we're gonna try. It's been taken off about 10 times. We're gonna do a light the Christmas tree. Just, these are the kind of things that I, it came on, went off, came on. Don't laugh at me. You know it's on right now, right?
Yep.
Tell them to remove it again. But it's, you know, these are the kind of things that I truly believe in because I'm not a device guy. People know I don't answer emails as good as the others because I'm not in front of a computer. I'm outside on my horse. I'm outside playing with my dog. I'm working. I'm an outside kind of guy. I love to hunt and fish. And so I promote that for others and I like these activities and opportunities to bring our community together. And, and again, I think that's, addresses both these last two questions is if we can't have a sense of unity, and I'm gonna tell you it starts, and this isn't an indictment of anyone. But it's gotta start with leadership. I talk a lot about Braveheart, the movie, and then another movie, Remember the Titans? Because I have great examples of leadership and when leadership didn't happen. So I love to use those. I'm not gonna get into those analogies now. But if we can't unify as a council, which I don't feel like it's been a unified council, even though we've got a lot done, we're not always going in the same direction. We're not in the same direction with our mayor. We're not in the same direction with our staff. And if we can't get some unity at the top and show some leadership, how do we expect our team to get some leadership and then our citizens? So we've got to be able to unify and to do that, we've got to be able to come together with some of these events and be able to bring people together, collaborate and unify and have fun as well as do some work. We gotta do some work too. But if we can't get together and be one community, how can we ever tackle some of these other issues and help others if, if all we are is locked up in a room looking at a device?
So also I want to ask, the whole thing coming into city center, you had youth come in and kind of choose what they would like to see. Is that part of what you guys have done or what's coming in?
Well, you mean, sir, I'm not sure I know you're.
The downtown.
Also a downtown thing. They helped us to, to the vision of the downtown. And I'm gonna tell you, one of the things that I love doing, Charlotte Duco is on the ticket actually. She's a teacher at the high school. She invites us in three or four times a year to come talk to the youth. And every time that I'm there, I always talk to them and ask them about what they would like to see. And it's usually recreation or other, you know, things to do, bowling, whatever that might be. And I take that seriously and I actually do some of those activities and we've promoted some of that. Even some as simple as putting a slide at a playground. Those are very meaningful meetings. And they're not just something to talk about. It's something that we actually take back to the office and do. We've carried out a lot of those activities and like you're saying, bringing the youth in and kind of including them in some of those activities. But to me, that's the stuff that number one, I'm already doing. I'll continue to do and, and promote. And I think it's important that we, we have to unify on these issues or we'll never figure it out. For me, it's true. I think we need to see each other and connect on a, on a personal human level. That's what I see. And I think events like what Jared has talked to create that opportunity for that connection. I think when you're working alongside somebody planting trees on a ridge line, because you, you want to make sure that that's available as a wildlife corridor or because you just want to beautify the neighborhood, that's hard work, right? But I think when you work side by side with someone and you sweat and you joke and you, and you have a good time. I mean, I think those are things that build those connections and those relationships. I've got a young man that works for me and he has a few wrestles. And there's not a day that I don't engage with him because I know that he has some personal struggles to just see how he's doing that day. And, and I think we just need to take some personal interest by doing what Jared suggests. Put aside the devices and really see people for who they are. Melanie's little daughter, Kenley, is one of my buddies. I'm just gonna tell you that. That girl through the last four years, every time she sees me, I don't know what it is about me, maybe I'm a little rounder than most. And she just wants to hug that guy. But I, I just love that little girl and I built a connection with her just by being around her and meeting her at the farmer's market with her mom. And that's how our relationship started. And I just think that we, we can do better at those types of human connections that just bind us together. And we stop seeing each other as different or competitors or better than or worse than us. We quit using that metrics and we just look at one another and.
We quit using that metrics and we just look at one another and say, you bring so much to my life and you elevate my experience by who you are. And I think we need to look for people like that. Facebook, I went on Facebook until I ran a campaign to get elected. I still absolutely hate Facebook, even though this is streaming live, because it's so easy. It's so easy to be disrespectful, to disregard, to demean, to demoralize those who were not looking in the eye and seeing the impact of those actions. So I just always try to remember that there is someone else on the other side of that that may not understand. It's really easy to be misjudged, right, or to be misheard, or for your words to be taken out of context. That's why, for me, I really like the personal interaction. That's why I said, let's sit down and talk. Because I really want to get to feel where you're at and understand better the circumstances that you've been wrestling with. Because I think it's deeper than probably what you've shared by a lot.
I take it very personally. My wife, I can tell you, I can tell you, somebody's people that, that attack me.
Yeah.
It gets really, really scary when I'm talking to my wife and my children. So it's actually deeper than it was.
Yeah, I, there's no question that it isn't.
I'm disgusted by it because it comes from the top, from the city, from our council, like, from whoever in charge of the city.
Well, I.
When I reported it, they apply it to me, but they don't apply it to the other people.
Well, let's have a conversation about that because I hope to change your mind, and I hope to give them perspective and understanding about your experience so that we can offer something that will help. That's really what I want to do. Okay. And I mean, Angelique, I don't think there's anything tougher in this world than to leave a child. One of the things that I do in my business in my day life is we produce these angels of hope that are all around the globe, all around the world. They're associated with Richard Paul Evans and the Christmas Box Story. There's one in our cemetery that my wife and I donated to the city because we understand the loss, that my sister lost a child and my brother lost a child. So it's personal to me. And I literally have had interactions with people from Japan and many other countries. And we're all exactly the same when it comes down to it. We all want to be loved and to love. We want to have our families, and we want to be accepted, and we want to be safe. Beyond that, there's not a whole lot of difference between us. Maybe education, maybe experience, maybe skills. I don't have a whole lot of skills. But those that I have, I've learned to accentuate. I'd love to put them to work for you as a city council member, so I hope you'll consider re-electing me, Brett. The two teams, number four, amcity.com. It's just, it's one of the best jobs that I've ever, that I've ever had. And that is tremendously difficult, but super rewarding.
This is the perfect segue because we're at a really important time right now in our area with creating this brand new school district. And obviously, this is top of mind for me. We have to stand by taking care of our youth, which of course means doing it right. So I would love to hear how you guys see the city admin, the mayor, the city council, working with the school board to create the kind of school district and the environment, the magnetism that we need and that our children deserve. Excuse me. And what kind of strategies you see being able to put into place to support that?
Man, that's like a softball for me, right? So, yeah, like, I don't know if I want to still have the thunder first, but first of all, I want to point out that I have zero kids in the system right now. I do pay for private college. I'm an empty nester. Actually, a couple of my kids are boomerangs, but they're all graduating and out of the system. So they've come back. I've got one married, one getting married. And there is no one on this side of the lake that I think, I don't want to say no one worked harder. No one was as concerned as I was and put in the time that I did for the district split. I kind of took that on as one of my responsibilities. And we all do different things at different times. I'm currently the council liaison to Alpine School District. I haven't missed a meeting in probably four or five years. I have not listened to last month's meeting yet, but I don't miss a single one. And I grill those district candidates a lot online about how they feel about the district. And I'm telling you, as far as the funding, I think is the number one thing. A lot of people were concerned about cutting programs. And I think really, before we get into that and what I know about the school district and that side of it and how I support it, it's really one of the proper roles. And there was a lot of discussion before that split took place about where do the council sit? And where do the board members sit? And who's in charge of this and who's in charge of that? And I'm going to tell you, education services are a hundred percent the board responsibility and the state board of education. And those roles stay with the school district board. The reason the split discussion became more of a political issue and into the cities and the government side of things is because of the taxes that are charged by the district with not a lot of checks and balances. I mean, they do have to go through truth and taxation, just like everyone else. But we also get a very small portion from the same base that is taxed. So I think that's where we came in and said, okay, we need to look at the numbers and figure out if the board's treating our children the same as they're treating other children. And I think that's when the government stepped in and said, okay, we want to make sure that we're getting equally treated because our district got so big, eighty-three thousand students, eighty-four thousand students through the district, fourteen cities, ninety-two schools, I believe. All this off the top of my head. It's been almost a year, so maybe rusty. But and I think the biggest thing is, is what I've watched in Saratoga, and especially when the district was still Alpine, they would come, yes, it still is, but Saratoga invites the board to the city for breakfast every year. And they get together, the entire board. And a lot of times, the people from the other side of the district wouldn't come. And so that was indicative of the fact that we weren't unified, even at the district level. So to me, it was about bringing us together and unifying. If I become the mayor, that's one of the first things that I'm going to do is make sure that every single board member is in touch with every single council member in the four cities, including Fairfield and Cedar Fort. I spoke to Fairfield's mayor today, and we spoke Saturday, and we spoke, I speak to Mayor Cook a lot. And of course, Chris Carr and I were the two signers on the, for this area, two of the signers for the interlocal agreement. He's going to be the new mayor in Saratoga. He's uncontested, unlike me. I've got lots of people that want this job. But Chris and I, we work very closely, shoulder to shoulder, and in a lot of things to do with the school district split. And I think we need to continue. It's really one of the things that unified, which is what kind of helped me get into this position as mayor, that, number one, unified our region. That helps us also now, I'm the guy that set up, that has relationships with Lehigh. I'm very tight with Lehigh's mayor and council, and including for generations past. But if we got to tackle some of these infrastructure problems like roads and other things, that conversation made it to where we're very unified right now. We need to keep that. Clearing the American fort to get both our education started and supported, but also the roads and other issues that we have. So back to the programs, you know, I feel like we've talked about the M E T and the property tax and sales tax that come from these data centers and other businesses. We will not be cutting services here. In fact, I'm the guy that says, our next high school, not this one, better have a swimming pool. Because I know how much money our district's going to have, and if they can't build a swimming pool, I'm going to be disappointed. And I also say, our closest auto mechanic shop for the Alpine School District is Clear Over in Orem. Why don't we have that opportunity for our kids here? Again, I mentioned Charlie Kirk, which I shouldn't do, but I listen to the guy way too much. But he talks about the, you know, higher education, especially whether or not it's worth it. And the need for more, I just lost the word, but. No, 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 not education. I mean, we need doctors and lawyers. Trades, yes, trade schools. And that's not the word I was thinking of, but that's what it is. It's the trades. Electricians, mechanics, welders, things like that. And I feel like if we can't get those CTE programs in our schools, I'm going to be disappointed. So I started swimming pools right after CTE and education, right? And Texas has football fields too. But I mean, our CTE report, we have aviation, which is awesome. But we need welders, we need electricians, we need all these other framers, roofers, you know, some of these other trades and manual labor with their hands, horseshoes, equestrians. So, yes, so I really, really want to emphasize. And I personally, whether I'm a mayor or a council member or just a person in the town with no kids in the system, I will continue to stay close to our school board and promote and help. And I'm going to tell you with my own money. I have helped fund and promote, and it's not just my mouth, but with my actions. And I was at the groundbreaking, and I was the first one to get on that caterpillar, not just the shovel. I got on the track hoe, and it's a big one too. It's a three fifty. It's a three fifty cat. They're giant. And I dug that foundation, man. I'm digging it. So it's, you know, it's one of those things that I don't just talk about. I put my money where my mouth is, and I'm going to promote that we continue to work together and collaborate. Some of those programs, especially the CTE stuff, I think aren't always in the building, right? They build a house. Alpine School District has been awesome about that, the home building program. So these are the things that I want to, if I'm able to, I grew up and my entire career spent is mostly in the excavation business. I've had other businesses, but if there's something that I can do to promote the CTE stuff and work with the youth, I already mentioned going to the school and those programs. I love spending time at the school, hanging out with those kids. Some of them are a little rowdy, and that's okay. I was too. And as long as my body will hold up, I'll keep doing it. But it's, you know, I think we have to collaborate, and there's a lot of things, starting with those lunches and stuff like that. And of course, on a personal one-on-one level, but I love the district, and trust me, I'm going to be involved, and I'm sure these guys will too.
I'm going to say, I don't have to be as involved as Jared has been. And frankly, I think that's what makes us a good governing body, is the fact that we can, that we can trust one another to go and represent one another's interests. He's obviously been a tremendous advocate and representative of the city to Alpine School District and all that has occurred. I wasn't quite as aware of all of what was going on, but I became aware, and that's my nature, is once I learn something, then I start to study and start to dig into it and decide, how can we help? What can we do? Should we be considering this or not as a city? And I wasn't convinced at first, to be frank, with you, Charity, but the more I learned, the more I realized that we were underrepresented and that our kids were probably not receiving all of the benefits that they were entitled to, to be frank with you. And so then the question became, what do we do and how do we do it? And to our citizens' credit, the only thing we had to decide was to put it on the ballot. So are we going to do it alone or in an interlocal agreement? And there were some pretty hefty conversations that happened two by two outside of that to decide, was Lehigh coming with us or not? I mean, all of those things were contemplated and discussed to council members at a time and back and forth. And we worried it, and we went back and forth, and we worried it. Anyway, arrived at all kinds of. But ultimately, we landed where we landed and said, let's put this on the ballot and let the citizens make this decision. And I think they made the right decision. So I think, how can we going forward, how can we be better? I think it really does come down to collaboration. I sit on the DRC, which is the Development Review Committee at the city level. We have a school that came in. It's one that they want to build over in Dryly Farms. And as I sat there and listened to our planners work with the representative of Alpine School District and show us the development plan for that elementary school that they just funded, they funded it with the high school, right? I looked at it. It comes in on one street, one surface street, one local street. It comes up on the side of that, and it tees across the back of the property and it dead ends. That's not acceptable, in my opinion. Now, it hasn't come before us, but I raised my hand in the DRC meeting, and I said to the representative of Alpine School District, who we don't collaborate with, who we don't get a chance to influence, I just said, look, I want to stop because our, to our staff's credit, they had identified that that was likely going to be an issue, right? And I just raised my hand. I said, look, is the only council representative present in this meeting? And the only one that you'll get any feedback from on this? I pulled out the state code, and I read them from the state code, those things that the city can regulate and has an influence on. And it is traffic circulation and health, safety, and welfare. And I said, I'm one member of the council. I can't make a decision for the council, but I'm going to tell you I know them pretty well. And I suspect if you bring this plan forward, that there's going to be some consternation about the traffic flow and the health, safety, and welfare of our kids at this elementary school. My understanding in following up with their planning just recently is that they intend to bring it forward in just that, just that configuration. So we'll see how the council deals with that. That's something that I would hope to be able to change, is to have some early collaboration about school siting, about traffic flow, the connectivity within and out of the neighborhoods, perhaps start times and stop times, and coordinating that or adjusting it so that it has less of an impact on those areas where those schools are sited. And I'd like to see schools spread out, not so congregated. And I think that's a siding issue again. I don't have any kids in the system, but I graduated from Alpine School District. My kids graduated from Alpine School District. I have two grandchildren, actually a third who just started this year in the system. So I'm concerned about making sure that they have the opportunities that are theirs and that the funding lands where it's supposed to land. So I'll leave it there. I don't know if Craig's with us or not. It doesn't look like you.
Kind of came back and left again.
Okay, well, maybe he'll come back. Does that answer your question?
While, while we're talking about schools, is there anything you can say or do about with how overcrowded they are because of how many houses there are so close together? Like, my kid's at Desert Sky, and he's going to be a sixth grader in a trailer at the middle school because of how overcrowded it is, and they just finished their second full year.
Yeah, what I would say is this, when that elementary school is built in Bradley Farms, it will already be over capacity. There's not a school in this area that hasn't experienced that and that won't continue to experience that until we get some district leadership in place and a financial plan that will support building those schools in a more timely way and, and perhaps servicing smaller student populations. I don't know. Um, but I don't expect that to change significantly in the going forward, but I think over the next four or five, six years, we can make an impact if people like Charity and others who are elected to the school board will make that a focus, uh, uh, of the, of the, of the district leadership.
Is there anything with zoning or code or anything like that that the council can do?
I think, I think one of the things that I've seen that you've kinda put on your platform is that you're gonna require developers to dedicate the land.
But I don't mean it quite like that.
Okay, well, well, so I think it's important to have this conversation, because you don't have, we don't have the legal right as a council to do that to the development community, unless we would negotiate that through a, a master development agreement. Uh, it's, it's called an exaction. It's an illegal taking of their property, and we're not entitled to do that. We, we can't do that. Can we work with them to help site the schools? That's possible, and I've seen some development plans that have done that. The problem is that the school district may or may not agree that that's a good place, and they may choose something that's completely outside. It's absolutely outside of our ability to, um, to produce an outcome with that. We can certainly make suggestions and have. Whether that falls on deaf ears or ears that are listening is really the difference, is can we build that collaborative relationship so that there's some influence you can exercise that you really don't have?
And we do have school district candidates here from District Three and Four, I believe, right? Three and Four.
We're boundary buddies.
Yeah, so. So it's, uh, we're excited to, I'm telling you, I can't wait to work with the schools. I, I think Craig's back, so we'll let him talk, 'cause I already did, sorry. But I just wanted to point out, like Brett said, what I love about our council right now is, you know, he and Rich were the ones working on that wildfire connection, and I was working on the school, and I'm a roads guy. But we're able to kinda, you know, divide and conquer, right? And, uh, we just kinda get different assignments at different times, but, uh, we really, really have a great council right now of, of guys that are digging in and doing the work and trying to move the ball forward. That's why I said that earlier question about, uh, getting things done and, and not feeling the, the impact of that yet. Holy smokes, we've got a lot done. So, anyway, more, throw me some more stop signs about schools, huh?
I, I, I'll, I'll be brief on this, 'cause we could probably hit some other topics, but I, I will comment, you know, that one of the first questions tonight was, "The city council's not doing anything. They're failing." And I hope tonight has been revelatory for those who are taking time to listen to how much work is being done. And the schools is another great, great, great example of that. Uh, here's what I'll say. So, I, I, I very much support the public school system. I've got a brother-in-law who's a principal. I've got a sister who is a teacher. I've got multiple nieces who are teachers. And so we'll definitely support that. I, I, my family, we homeschool, and we also have some public school that we've taken up. But this is, this is where I'm going to, uh, throw the question back, and this is just a rhetorical question at this point, but I, I have, I bring a certain expertise to the table. And when we're talking about the schools, this is where I need to rely on other people's expertise to guide me as a city councillor. I'm not gonna come tell you that I'm, that I am a, like, wizard at public school stuff, because I'm not. But there are people in this room, and there are people in our community who are. And that's where, as a city councillor, I'm here to listen and say, "Okay, educate me and help me know what problems are you experiencing that I can help with." And I can give examples in my life where I've done that, where people brought those kinds of situations to me, educated me on matters, and then I became a champion to help them in that regard. And so that would be a similar thing in this. And I'm just grateful for the two men sitting there who've done so much in this regard.
Yeah, and then closing, what I didn't do is address the second follow-up question. So real quick, uh, you talked about the sites and stuff, which we've not really battled, but kinda struggled with how we work around it and the district works around it, 'cause we're two different people, not on the same team, when it's as big as it is. And I think when it's closer, we will get on the same team. And then address the other overcrowding issue. And I wanna point out, like he said, I've got, uh, two sisters that are teachers, and my wife, who has been a counselor. Uh, she's doing social work right now, but, uh, possibly do counseling again in the school. And, uh, when I came, the problem came clear back, the last bond we passed was in twenty sixteen. Uh, twenty twenty wasn't able to bond. Twenty twenty-two failed. So, I mean, we're really ten years behind on our bonding for, for the growth, and that's where that second question is. Um, so we have to catch up, and, and I think the problem is everybody saying, "Oh, they're feeling that pinch of we haven't been on the ball." Well, really, that's what drove the split. Uh, you know, I started working on this in twenty twenty. It wasn't until twenty twenty-two when the district did the study, and in twenty twenty-three, when we finally got going into it, and then the, the twenty twenty-four ballot issue. I've been working on this forever, and it was pretty unpopular in my extended household. And, uh, it took me a while to show them. Uh, luckily, I, I had enough foresight to make sure I had my ducks in a row and my numbers in the, on the right page, but, uh, I was able to say, "Look what we're doing." And, uh, wearing my sister's morning, you know, teachers. But, uh, but they, I think they came on board and, and supported it in the end, but it was a little scary. I'm not, I'm not gonna say it wasn't, but, uh, and now we need to, again, put our money where our mouth is and make sure that we're able to create a strong district. And I'm not gonna say it's not gonna be hard for a few years. Uh, some of that money that we expect, those surpluses haven't quite come in yet. But I think our growth alone, and especially some of the smaller economic growth, we are seeing that, and we have a little bit of a surplus to play with, and I think we can catch up on the growth and then, uh, support the district and hopefully, uh, here in six, eight years, get some more bonds passed and, and man, we'll be rocking and rolling if we can get bonds back. And look, it passed on our area, even in twenty twenty-two. So, these are things that I think if we can start passing bonds and get lower interest financing, we're going to be able to create a really, really strong district. And I think, uh, as a leader of a city, that that's our job to make sure that we collaborate with the leaders of the board and that we can come together and make sure that we are, uh, more unified, which is one of my, what I talk about a lot on the trail right now, and when I'm talking to people out and about, is we have to unify. And that's both at the city level, and I already said this a minute ago, between council members, between our council mayor, between our elected officials and our staff, and then reaching out to our neighboring communities, including the school board and the state. So, if, and it's gotta start at the top, which is the whole reason I got my, my name on that ballot. So, you did a plug, uh, it's Jared Gray, the number four mayor.
Anyway, uh, look it up. Let's get this going.
Any other questions?
Are we gonna wrap up anyway? Was there any other online, or is that it?
There was a few.
See, we make them thirty-second questions? Yes, no, maybe? Absolutely. I'm gonna go into my housing plan as soon as this, this live feed goes off.
Um, that one we can do later. Yeah.
If you wanna send us the questions that did-
Yeah, I'll send you the questions. It's hard to reach them.
Yeah, it, once this gets posted, anybody that didn't get a question answered, post it, and we'll just answer it right there under the, under the feed. How's that? So if your question didn't get answered, I should let you do the rap, but, you know, my TV experience, I'm just gonna rap. No, just kidding. Anybody that doesn't have a question to answer, put it on there, and we'll, and we'll get to it. I guarantee Craig will, and Brett and I will as well, so.
Grab him.
Let's, uh-
All right, and we will post this, and you can ask your questions. Thank you. Oh. I'm gonna have him stay on. Hey, Frank. Um, I need it to fully upload, so you need to just, there.